So, we'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Lemmonsters School Committee. We are here at Apple Seeds Restaurant. It is May 3rd, fifteenth. This is a regular meeting of the school committee. And we will stand and join me in salute to the flag, please.
The pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the public forum. Would anyone like to address the school committee? If so, microphone and your name for the record, please.
My name is Dakota Anderson. I live at nineteen Crossman Avenue. So as I said, my name is Dakota Anderson. I'm a sophomore at the Lemmonster Center for Excellence. I'm here to present to you my research on mental health for youth and how the schools can help. All of my research comes from the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Did you know one in five children ages thirteen to eighteen have or will have a serious mental illness? Or that about fifty percent of students ages fourteen and older with a mental illness drop out of high school? Suicide is the third leading cause of death in youth ages ten to twenty-four. And ninety percent of those who died by suicide had a mental illness. As you can tell, there is a serious issue, but how can we help? In schools, we get help by listening to students who need help and by spreading positivity and awareness. I've been designing posters to hang around my school. And my hope is to spread them to other schools. This is just a rough draft. The final draft will look much neater. Parents can help too. If you are the parent of a child with a mental illness, the National Alliance of Mental Illness suggests you talk to a pediatrician, get a referral to a mental health specialist, work with the school your child goes to, and connect with other families. My hope is that together we can end the stigma against mental illness.
Thank you Dakota.
Thank you very much.
Can you pass your poster?
You know, just to comment on this, not, Dakota, you did a really fine job. But there was just an article in the paper this morning about elementary kids committing suicide.
Yeah, there was that hit you rule.
It was an A rule last week.
Thank you again. Would anyone else like to address the committee? Gary?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gary Zimmerman, Lynn Haven Road, Lemmonster. First, I want to start off by saying thank you to all the teachers from Fallbrook to Samoset to the high school that helped both my daughters with their education. I didn't get a chance to come at the end of last year to say that, so I wanted to give them a big shout out and thank you. I want to bring up some things about the budget and net school spending again. I agree with the mayor on some of the things he spoke about last meeting, especially spending over net school spending. The taxpayers are the ones that bail out budget issues in all departments. So let's take a look at what's spent above net school spending to help with education of our children. The mayor mentioned some of these last week. Capital improvements around the schools, the heating system, the roofs, the windows, all the changes to the high school. And again, as I heard last meeting, this is all above net school spending. Free and reduced lunch to help the less fortunate have food to hopefully help them learn better. I think the number is around forty-five percent of the population in the schools. Free busing in the district to some, but not all. And I'm sure there's more. Free busing or mileage reimbursement to parents for kids with special education needs. So again, this is all spent above net school spending. Yes, you have net school spending, and yes, the formula should be changed. But there are a few things that probably should change with it also. In the last meeting, Glenn Fratto talked about the 2.5 million early retirement healthcare costs. Don't you think that should be reformed? And everyone's retirement, private or public sector, should be the same, age sixty-five or sixty-seven. Why should taxpayers pay someone else's healthcare since they decide to retire early? Good for them, but not good for the taxpayer. Sorry. Schools always want more money. But look at the salaries, the pensions, the benefits. There's a lot of money spent out there in the school system for all of these things. And again, the taxpayers end up paying it all. It's only going to get worse and worse, but no one's doing anything about it. These packages or contracts should be reformed, so there is more money in the schools. But no one will change it, and the taxpayers will continue to take the brunt of it. So I agree with the mayor. You have net school spending. Put in what else you need in priority order, and if there is money left over, you should get some. And you should get some if there's money. Remember, everyone else wants our taxpayers' dollar also. City Hall, fire, police. But I also think the mayor should hold these departments to the spending limit. But that's a conversation for a different meeting. I've got two more quick points. I know I'm running to my two minutes. I talked to Wendy and Heather about this a few months ago. I also, in talks with Glenn Fratto, there's a new key, not a new key term, a key term called ROI, which is return on investment, that we talked about. Like the LCE school in the five million dollar field. I think in the meetings, if you could explain more to the public, and when I talked with Heather and Wendy, a lot of times we talk behind the scenes and you learn more and more about something. But we only see certain things from a taxpayer on the outside. So again, what is the return on investment at LCE? You know, what is the cost if you didn't have that school and you had to bus people out? And hearing those numbers does a great help to the public. Same thing with the five million dollar field. After last week's meeting, I know I talked to a few people and said, "Oh, I can't believe they're doing the field." But when I talked to people before that, and they talked about, you know, the track team. If they have a home meet, how much money saved in not busing them to an away game? How much money is saved when you don't bus them to the Doyle Field every day? So if you have that, if you know that return on investment, and it's explained in the meetings, I think it's a little more helpful than saying, "We're spending five million dollars," or "we're not spending it," or "for this six hundred thousand dollar school." But if there's a return on it and you know that number, it's a great help to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the committee? If so, just step forward for the microphone, please, one more time, one last time. If not, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Just like to read the Lemmonster School Committee's statement. "The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public School students and places their interests above all others. We'll exercise leadership adhering to our protocols and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We'll advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster." Go back to our agenda now, and move on to reports by the superintendent.
Okay, through the chair, we are in the busy part of the school year as graduating seniors begin to prepare for graduation day on Saturday, June 3rd. A number of events were held last week, so we just wanted to go over those for the benefit of the public. We have the CTEI Annual Advisory Committee Meeting on Wednesday evening, May 10th. Nice event in the high school cafeteria. And that was pretty much sponsored by the CTEI Culinary Program. The LHS CTEI National Honor Society induction and installation of offices on Thursday, May 11th. Again, a nice annual event for the students in the National Honor Society. And on Friday morning, the North Central Mass Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Breakfast. We had six graduating seniors that received two thousand dollar scholarships. Olivia Burns, which was a Health Alliance Hospital Scholarship. Laura Jenny, again, the Health Alliance Hospital Scholarship. John Gove, the Enterprise Bank and Trust Scholarship. Kristin McGee, the David L. McKeon Scholarship. Kayla Oliver, the M. Ruth Lee Scholarship. And Mark Parthier received the Chamber Golf Tournament Scholarship. So congratulations to those students for those awards. The senior awards night will be held on Thursday evening, June 1st, at the Lemmonster High School Auditorium. And that is an exciting night with many, many scholarship awards to graduating seniors. And then, as I've stated before, there's many other events in all the schools across the district over the next few weeks. So check the district website calendars for more information. Bob Landry had sent us an email that the string program or the orchestra program that was started here at, well, primarily with middle school students, will be at the following performances this coming Thursday, May 18th, at the Samoset Evening of the Arts. That's at Samoset Middle School, from seven to eight-thirty. Next Wednesday, May 24th, at the All-City Coral Night at Lemmonster High School. That's from seven to eight-thirty. And then Thursday, May 25th, at the Elementary All-City Coral Night, from six-thirty to eight o'clock. So just a couple of other dates, if you want to mark those. And just one other point that I see that Kathy got at, our nursing leader is here in the audience tonight, but her and I and Jen Monday, who's our coordinator of social-emotional work here in the district, have put together some correspondence regarding the Thirteen Reasons Why series that has been shown on Netflix. There's been a lot of, it's been very popular among students, but there's been a lot of concern about the thematic issues that are in the program. So what we've done is we've put a letter together, which will be on the website, along with a series of additional resources that parents can access. Parents can access, so more of these questions, you can call Kathy in the nurse's office. But this information will be there, so if parents are stretching to need some information to communicate with their children about this particular series, the information will be on the website. So that completes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Are we closed out on the public hearing yet for school choice? We haven't had that.
No, we haven't had that, no.
You haven't had that, okay. So we should do that now. This is a public hearing of the school committee on school choice. Anyone from the public that would like to address the school committee, speak in favor or against? We'll take in favor first. If anyone would like to come to the microphone and speak in favor of school choice, you may do so at this time. One last time, we'll close this part. We'll go to those opposed to school choice. Anyone here would like to speak? Just come forward, your name and address for the record, please. One more time. If not, we'll close that portion of the meeting. We'll close the public hearing. We'll now move on to presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
Well, we had a presentation scheduled with the CTI students that had done a research study on LGBTQ. But unfortunately, the teacher, Sandy Cuciara, who had led that initiative, her mother passed away last week, and I believe that there's been a little bit of mis-scheduling due to that event, so apparently our student group isn't here. So I apologize for that.
No, no problem. We'll move on to subcommittee reports. Finance?
Can I just say something about that? Since I was there, Jim and I were at their presentation.
Yep, and Gina was there.
And Gina. I just wanted to say, it was, if you can ask Sandy maybe to send it to you, or it might even be our...
It was in the package.
They did such a good job. They shared with us the literature they had read. They had done surveys throughout the school with staff and students. They had really done some really good, hard research and asked some really serious questions of their peers, and they had done an amazing job.
Okay.
But the highlight of the presentation was a student who had done the lyrics to a rap, and they were going to present that tonight for the school committee. But we'll follow up on that later on.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to finance subcommittee reports. Any warrants?
I don't think we voted on the warrants. Did we? Where's Glenn? We didn't, did we? Yeah, no. Well, I mean, the last time we were together, though, we didn't, did we? No. So our next finance meeting is Thursday night. We haven't met since last meeting, I don't think.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
Two weeks ago, yeah. So we really have nothing to report. We're waiting to hear, most importantly, from Glenn about this current year's status, so we know really what deficit we're carrying into next year. And then work on next year.
FY eighteen, yep.
Where is your meeting on Thursday?
Here, at Apple Seeds.
And that's at what time?
At six-thirty, Kristen? Yep.
Anything else under finance? Okay, if not, policy?
We are in the process of cleaning up the elementary, middle school, and high school handbooks, and we'll present them as soon as they're done.
Okay. Anything else, any other subcommittees? Okay. We'll now move on to approval of the minutes.
Wendy? Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve both sets. Both, we're doing them all at once, so both sets of minutes?
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion is second. Errors, omissions, discussion.
Good job, Chris.
You ruined my record.
I know, I was just going to say.
You ruined my exit. All right. We have a motion and a second. No errors, omissions, discussion. All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Oh, I just found some. Kid. March 20th, policy subcommittee. Do we have minutes? That wasn't included, right?
Yeah, included, yeah.
So you did both, okay. Action items, approval of Lemmonster as a school choice district for years 2017 and 2018.
Okay, we didn't have any comments from the public hearing. Gina does have essential numbers and information for you if you wish to hear that before you make a final decision on this.
Was it this?
That's the guidelines, but she also has information on the students, so.
I just wanted to share, you receive the updated guidelines in your packets, but I'm sending around another copy as well. And then I did pull the accurate numbers that we have at this moment for projected numbers for next year, as well as what our numbers were last Friday, as far as our counts. So that'll give you an idea. But the one thing I want to say is that the counts don't include our kindergarten registrations, which will be another hundred students when you look at the K numbers. And everybody have it?
I'm just missing one of the, one of the numbers. You have to take one of each page.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I handed them down.
One is the guidelines and one the numbers. You need to...
I need a number sheet.
I have a number sheet. Here, there's some number sheets here. Give one to Ms. Heather.
You said it'll add about a hundred in the kindergarten?
Yes, if you take a look at the numbers, you'll see that as of now, we had our registration held at Northwest School for our incoming K students. And as of now, our numbers are close to three hundred. But we know that we are going to register at least another hundred or so in the kindergarten. And then this does not account for all the registrations that'll be coming in the rest of this year and then over the summer. And then, right, any of the new registrations. So we will be over six thousand students again, but that's projection. And also, the kindergarten numbers as well. So my recommendation would be to approve, continue our school choice options, K to twelve. Yes. You'll look there, there is, we do have a large senior class next year. That was that very large junior class we had, so that's moving up. But in all of the, according to our district guidelines and the numbers for the each level, what we do, the process that we go through, is we will be waiting for the end of the year, and then we roll all of our numbers over. And then we go by the guidelines, and I see where we have openings. And as soon as a grade is closed, then I announce that grade's closed.
Gina, does the ninth grade include the projected enrollment from Westboro or...
Westboylesdon. Right now, we have four applications that have been completed up at the guidance office at CTEI. I spoke to Mary the other day, and they're projecting...
But that's not in these numbers here?
Not yet. Not until they are fully registered and have everything. These numbers, the projected numbers right there is what we have right now that are fully registered and in our database. Yes, Heather?
So my only concern, obviously, is we don't know what we're doing with this year's budget. So if we're having to relieve teachers, and then we have lots of classrooms. I live on the south side. There's a huge condo housing, whatever, that just went up. And there's, I can't even tell you how many for sale signs, so that's, you know, the potential of war kids moving in. So, I mean, that's just my concern, is what, I mean...
Right. I, school choice applications, as soon, we've been receiving a lot of calls, waiting for when this decision would be made in the parent center. But we begin taking them, they're all stamped dated, when we receive the applications, but no action is taken on an out-of-district school choice child till our students are all placed. So that doesn't happen till into the summer.
Have we heard anything from the high school's guidance office of any students going to school choice out?
I don't have those numbers yet. I don't think they have confirmations yet. But they do, as far as how many students are choicing out, I don't have those numbers. Those, we don't have that data just yet.
Just for clarification, school choice out to other districts or going to private schools?
Either.
You know, private, okay. Yeah, we haven't received those.
So this is just a vote on it?
Projecting. This is just a vote.
You can determine how many you take in each classrooms based on other factors in the future.
Based on our policy.
But right now, this is a vote just to give to the state to say we're in or we're out.
Yes, we have to have a public vote, and it has to be publicized whether we are going to be a school choice district again for next school year.
I make a motion to... Oh.
You can make a motion and second, and then discussion.
Then discussion.
Motion?
I make a motion to approve school choice for the 2017-2018 school year.
I'll second.
For the second? Discussion?
Hold on. Sorry. Can I talk?
Go ahead.
Heather?
Yeah.
Is that okay? So I just want to say, again, I'm not against school choice. I think that we need to look really, really carefully before we let one child in the door. As Heather said before, we don't know what our class sizes really look like yet. And I think that, I've been a little bit of research, more communities than not are closing their doors to school choice, because while that revolving account looks very enticing, in the long run, it's costing districts more than they're receiving. And I think we just need to proceed with caution moving forward.
Okay, back to me. Sorry. So, and you might have already answered this question, and I apologize if you did. So we accept school choice tonight or not? So we'll say, yes, we all approve school choice. When, what is like the date that you can start saying, yes, you're coming to Lemmonster, or yes, you're coming to Lemmonster? You know what I mean? When do you start?
Not till in the summer, because it takes a while to get all of our Lemmonster students registered. And we have families that don't come right in to register. I have been registering students from St. Anna's, St. Leo's. They've been in high schools we've registered, that have moved into Lemmonster, that are Lemmonster residents. But not out of district. That won't happen till, till we know our numbers and we have rolled them all over. And so we know where we are.
And will we have that conversation again before you start doing that, or no?
Once, well, we are a school choice.
Typically, we don't.
We don't, no.
Because it's summertime, and we don't tend to meet in July. But I'm all for meeting before we accept students, if that's what people want to do.
But that's what we're voting on.
That's what we're voting on now.
I know, you're voting on the process.
Just to see what the class sizes look like and how many we're taking in. I mean, we're voting on whether it happens or not, not whether we actually let them in.
It's going to be used.
But it's going to be public, but it's going to be publicized that we are a school choice district.
Right.
So there are triggers that happen because we're announcing that, or we're approving it if we do tonight.
But we don't have, I mean, if we're not at twenty-five everywhere, we don't have to fill classes up to twenty-five.
No, you can let one kid in. You can let one kid in and comply with the law.
I mean, just to figure out how many we're going to allow, what our plan is.
It'll all go by the guidelines, the size of our classes, once we know our classes.
And again, I can't stress enough to, you know, those parents to understand the process of interest city-school choice. Those are the people that get upset the most, who want their, you know, to sort of move around. Because, and I understand sometimes they have three kids going to three different schools. I get that. But they're the unhappiest when they find out how the rules work, right, Chris?
You caught me.
So, I know.
They do.
And I say, talk to Chris.
I'm not talking to the inter. I mean, it's just coming from out of district. The ones within our own are different.
Right. But they all come up at the same time. They'll all come in at the same time.
So I, I think Kristin's concern about cost is definitely valid. But I think that we have these really clear guidelines of what our class sizes will be before Gina accepts, before a single student from out of district is accepted in. So it does, voting to stay a school choice school doesn't obligate us to take even a single student. If we don't have the room, we don't have the room. Is that correct?
Right. If our class numbers exceed or meet our policy, that is correct.
Right. So there's no harm done in staying a school choice school? Because if we, if our issues make it so our class sizes grow, then we just don't accept any students. But if we vote not to, we lose the option to.
And I'm not saying we don't vote not to. I'm just saying proceed with caution. Because every year, we fill up our classrooms with as many school choices as we can to our limit. When we need to, say, to shed one teacher per grade, we really can't do that because we don't have classroom sizes to expand and contract. So, I mean, it depends on what we're talking about, I think.
There's no reason we can't have a discussion prior to opening up, you know, deciding, just informational, sort of ten minutes on where you're at, how many spots you have.
I can share with you that some of the inquiries that I've had for school choice are families that we have accepted siblings, and they have now another couple of siblings that they would like to send to our school. So those are ones that I know will be at my door tomorrow.
But we're not going to know tonight. There's just no way until we get the final numbers.
No.
And then, so prior to opening the gate up, you've got a list, prioritize who signed up first. And we'll just, when you're ready, a meeting at some point, fifteen minutes, show us the numbers, and off we go.
But I think in Kristin's concern, we're going to know that before we allow school choice to come in. We're going to know that probably within the next few weeks, that we're not going to...
Well, I think, what Heather's point is, though, we, in the next few weeks, we stop meeting, in essence. So we won't know. The administration will know it, but we won't.
We'll have another meeting.
We will know if we have to cut a class at this school, or cut a class at that school, or cut a class in this grade.
But what I'm saying is if every year we keep going to maximum the school choice kids, you almost know what your grades are going to look like every year. You know, there's not a lot of room for expansion or contraction, that's all. If you keep filling up to twenty-two every year, you know what you're going to be at.
And we'll meet prior to making any commitment. Gina will come in, and we'll look at the numbers, see what the class sizes are, see who's interested. We know pretty much same people are going to be interested, same in numbers. We'll go from there. Ron?
My only concern about all this is as follows. Yes, we're talking about class size. And I know we had made a conscious decision about having the class size at the twenty-two or twenty-five. But we have to be careful not to be accused of baiting and switching. If it doesn't, if we don't like it, then we suddenly decide we're not going to fill it up. Because there'll be some parents out there saying, "You said you're going to have school choice. Now you're not going to have school choice because supposedly your classes are being filled." Or, "They're already full, and we can't take it anymore." I would like to know, is there a state guideline telling us, guiding us on if we decide not to take anymore because the classes are full? Or we've decided the classes are full?
No. Ron, that happens when, right.
I, I know it's policy, but I'm asking, what trumps? Does the state policy trump local policy, or is it city?
No, just, all we're doing is voting, saying that we're in. It doesn't say...
It doesn't say how many we have to take.
Nothing. It just says, you know, we're interested. Letter of... It just says, you know, we're interested, letter of intent, saying we plan to do school choice.
Right. If someone, if we were at, close to our number for a certain grade, then I would announce, like, grade three is closed to school choice. We just can't accept anymore, because we've met our policy.
Because, I guess, maybe it's just me, maybe.
No, I think you're agreeing with everybody. We're all in agreement that we're going to prove it tonight, it sounds like it. And then we'll meet prior to when, you know, when they make any commitments, so we know what classes are open.
Somebody from out there is going to come back and tell us, you know what, guys? You okay this? And all of a sudden, you're saying you're not okay with this.
No, we're trying to be clear tonight, we're not.
We can't have it both ways.
Gina, are our guidelines anywhere other, like, are these at your office as well?
They're on the website.
So there's no, the guidelines are public, so people can see. We're not changing the numbers. They can see before they even take a chance on what it is. So there's no.
You know, the devil's always in the details.
And this is really, really well spelled out, so.
Okay. Is a motion and a second? All in favor? Those opposed? Okay. We'll now move on to approval of recommendations for FLAC, CAPS Board Representation, 2017-2018, Suzanne Colas, CAPS Educational Collaborative. Is there a motion to approve Suzanne being our representative to CAPS Collaborative?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Congratulations. You don't get asked.
No. We don't care.
You missed a meeting, we nominated, you missed a meeting, we nominated you. And you said yes. We looked at your name plaque, it said, do you agree? And it moved, like a Ouija boy. Okay. And Jim for FLAC, Educational Collaborative?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Jim, you accept that if we approve it? Okay. All in favor? Okay, thank you. And the consensus agenda on here?
Yeah, the only things on the consensus agenda, I'm just trying to map out the process so that we can get the budget to the mayor on June 1st.
Look at my schedule.
Which these would be additional meetings that would be necessary, and we'll talk in more detail as to how to proceed with the finance subcommittee on Thursday evening. But if we could add a meeting for next Monday, which would be May 22nd, to have the discussion with the full committee on the FY '18 budget. The May 24th date that I put out for the FY '18 budget public hearing in the auditorium, I think we'll probably have members of the public come out. That's the only reason I had scheduled it for the auditorium. Apparently, the auditorium has choral and music concerts there that evening. So I would recommend that we perhaps move it to Thursday, May 25th, and then we would have to meet.
There's a chorus at the 25th, on the 25th also in the, in the auditorium?
Okay.
The elementary one.
I know we're done at 5:00 on Monday. I don't know if there's other people after us.
Wait, on Mon, on which one? On Thursday? I mean, on Wednesday?
Wait, on the, we just said the 24th.
The 24th, we're done at 5:00, but the, the middle school is at 7:00. It's their concert. And then on the 25th is the elementary concert.
I can't make, the 24th, I can't, I can't even make it.
I can't make the 24th either?
How about the 25th?
I can't do the 25th. I can't do the 25th, and Kristen can't either.
The 25th?
Right, we're at, we have our.
That's the chorus.
Okay, well, we, I need some help here, because we have.
How about if we just push it? How about if we just push it ahead a few days, and we'll have the public hearing, we'll have the.
The 22nd? How about the 23rd?
Well, no, I was going to think the 30, 31st is, Tuesday is, is the 30th.
We already have a meeting, and that we were supposed to.
So what about the 23rd for the public hearing?
Well, we can do the public hearing on the 22nd. It's just that the committee's not going to have opportunity on its own to look at the budget, so.
So what about the 23rd for the public hearing?
I just.
21?
23, it would be Tuesday.
I can do it.
Just that you have two meetings, two nights in a row, that's all.
Or can we do it on the 30th and then vote right after?
Well, typically, the committee doesn't like to do that. They usually like to hear the, the comments from the public, and then deliberate, and then be able to take the vote on the budget.
What about the 23rd? Are they going to come and speak to us? You know, is our plan?
Well, the only issue that, and I think we discussed this a little bit of finance, is the budget is so straightforward, and we're actually looking at reductions that to have, we had PPS come in, but to have the department, I mean, the principals come in and do full presentations. The feedback that the principals gave us was, they didn't really think it was necessary because the budget's going to be pretty much stable from last year, so.
I guess I wasn't thinking so much about, you know, a full presentation like we've had in the past, but just, I don't know, where they think they have room to give, what class sizes would be, I don't know. I just hate to vote on a budget without hearing.
Well, they'll, they can be here on the 22nd, on Monday evening, if you wish them to be, so that you can have them at least give five minutes each or something. We can do it that way.
Are those thoughts integrated into the superintendent's budget?
They are, yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I hope that they are building the budget with Jim. I don't know, I just, we've never voted on a budget without hearing from our principals.
I have to, I've noticed that it's Saturday.
Right.
So can we do the 23rd then?
We do it tomorrow weekend. As long as we get the add in, the, the, add in the paper by tomorrow, so.
I mean, does that work for everybody?
I won't be, I.
The 23rd, you won't be, they're all gone all of next week.
We're leaving, we're leaving Friday, a week.
Oh, so you couldn't make the, I am.
Yeah, you couldn't make any of those, so.
No.
Can everybody else make the 23rd?
That's why I was hoping you'd keep it for the 30th.
I can.
We're still doing it 30th.
I know you are.
Yeah.
But I'm going to be missing one or two of them.
All right. So we'll meet on the 22nd. That'll give us enough time to work through the basic budget components with the full committee. We'll meet on the 23rd for the public hearing, and then we'll subsequently meet the day after Memorial Day on the 30th for the vote on the budget, so we can move the budget on to the mayor for June 1st.
And all of these are at 7:00?
They'll all be at 7:00, yeah.
And we'll be, on the 23rd, do you think the auditorium is free, just so, or just make sure we verify where we're meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll.
Chris, can you send out a reminder? I put it in here, but just in case.
And just for the record, I'll be there, whatever my day would be.
Yeah, I save it myself here.
Okay.
I might run into that same thing.
Thank you for your help with that, just so that we can move that through and get the process underway, so.
Looks like we have everything. Anything on the new oral business? Yes.